And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fellow citizens, roll call.
Commissioner Vesani?
Uh, here.
Commissioner Parham?
President.
Commissioner Muir?
Here.
Commissioner Zeta?
Here.
Chair, copy.
Here. All right, non-agenda public comment time. This is time set aside for those who wish to address the commission on matters that fall under the authority of the commission and are not listed on the agenda. Does anybody have anything?
No.
All right, do we have any conflicts of interest on tonight's agenda?
Not a one.
All right, public hearings. First up, variance application for William Hofer and Julie. Proposed to construct a 14-foot by 24-foot garage, proposed to be three feet from property line and under one foot from the rear property line adjacent to Rome Street.
Okay, basically, this is a, uh, I'm trying to think of these, uh, variance, uh, application. Essentially, the property is in a pretty tight neighborhood, if you ask me, it's on Stringtown, it's the front, and the back is another street, so it's a through lot. Oops, I'm sorry. So it's a through lot. So the setbacks are different on the back, but still, um, there is a, on the lot, there is a house, normal house, then a guest house. And the applicants wish to put a garage in where the, there's like a parking slab at this point in time. And the garage needs to have a variance due to the fact that the side yard setback can't be met, and it's three feet, and the rear yard setback can't be met either. There's a corner where it becomes kind of like one foot from the property line. So that's why we're here for the variance. Now, there's some technical things as far as just how the pavement is laid out, you know, apparently the, the proposed garage will be within, well, seven feet from the pavement, but still from the property line counts, and that's only one foot. Now, the surrounding neighborhood does have a lot of encroachments on, on the setbacks as it is. The very next door property has a garage that's, uh, put three feet from the property line. So three feet is kind of like the minimum for, uh, building code issues, I would say. So that, with the fact that there's one next door and then there's one still three feet, I'm sure they're gonna have to do some kind of, you know, adjustments to what kind of firewalls they might have. All, all that stuff comes out in the, in the, um, let's say, the, in the wash, so when they're getting the building permit. Now, let me just discuss Sequo a little bit first. It's exempt from Sequo because it's approximately a 440 square foot construction, previously developed site. The structure is an accessory structure to the home, so the project is exempt under section 15303, subsection E. It's like new construction of less than 2,500 square feet and it's an accessory structure. If we really wanted to look at it deeper, I would say it's an infill project as well, but the applic-, the notice of exemption that I filled out is basically just for this small structure. Variances are kind of one of those things where sometimes people misunderstand, you know, like when they're planning a project and they, and they can't make their project fit into their property line or some kind of convenience factor, that all they have to do is go apply for a variance and it's like some kind of permission to, to just, you know, do what their project is just by paying a fee and filling out an application. Now, the state of California thinks a little differently of that. Well, first of all, there's two levels here. We have the state of California who lays out what the variance is about, and also it's reflected the same in our own municipal code. So I, I included all the application materials here because the best, I would say the best discussion or description of what's going on is from the project engineer, Ken Kowag, who lays out a case pretty much on, I, on what's mentioned here, I think, section four, three, four, or something in that, uh, oh, four and five in the, um, application, and he lays out the reasons why they feel they need a variance. Well, um, essentially it says the variance is requested to fit a garage of a, quote, effective size on the rear of the parcel near Rome Avenue. The size is approximately 14 feet wide and 24 feet long. Now, in parking world, that's really just a couple feet each side, like the parking space is about 10 by 20. So they're asking for a couple feet each side and a couple feet, you know, the other way. And I guess that means effective, it's like the smallest it can be, okay, for the, and so, now, when the planning commission is considering the application based, should be based on the following, on, on the code section. I'm gonna say this, we've been through this before, that any variance granted shall be subject to such conditions as will assure that the adjustment thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and district in which the subject property is situated. And because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, that the strict application of this title is found to deprive such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. Now, the state goes further, and they say it has to be an undue hardship, meaning that really based on the topography or the size and shape of the lot, that is kind of impossible to do the normal, you know, development of the property. I think the next door neighbor probably had a variance as well. I'm just guessing here, but that's a triangle, part, piece of property, kind of Rome Street and Stringtown kind of come together. And they have a triangular shaped property that looks just hard to work with, and that would be the kind of thing that the state has in mind for granting variances. Or, you know, a building site that's small, here, and then a lot of canyon, or something that makes it so they can't meet the setbacks and do what everybody else, you know, basically everybody else has, developed their property, but they can't to the same degree, so they ask for a variance. And these undue hardships are supposed to be backed up by evidence on them. So what we have here is evidence on the record, which is the application, and like I said, questions four and five, sections four and five have a series of questions about why this is an undue hardship, basically why it is that we should grant the variance. In a perfect world, it's like where the actual physical aspects of the property pose unique challenges. Um, you know, I've been through that, lot size and all that. So again, it's the state that says that necessary hardship. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, and the hardship is not a self-created hardship. Really must be more than a mere inconvenience or preference for a more lenient standard. Things such as cost of compliance, not really a hardship. It is not enough for an applicant to say that the building will cost more in order to comply, and therefore they need the variance, but that's just background about variances. Here, we have things where we have five-foot setbacks which, for sidewalks on the interior. And in the rear, it's a 10-foot setback, I believe. And other things about like, say, well, like block coverage and, and data like that, but in this case, we're, they're just going for a variance overall, so any of these things that aren't really standards, that could be covered under a variance. Now, this particular neighborhood is odd, as far as the lot configurations go. There seems to be a lot of areas where either a variance was granted or maybe not really looked at at all, maybe the city looked another way, I haven't really looked into five. It's all through lots, so really we have a, a street which probably really serves more of an alley for one side of the street, but still the frontage is on the other side. So we have a garage that's within one foot of the rear property line. Now, to me, if you look right at, right, right at the, um, the building sitting there is a guest house, quote unquote, um, you know, it, I just can't help thinking that that garage might, might have been a garage, I mean, that guest house might have been a garage at one point. So you have to consider that, that someone elected to convert their already existing garage into another one, a new garage, but that's really, in this neighborhood, you know, I'm, I'm still thinking, so... There's one thing that in our code that says if, if there's four properties on one street front that don't meet the setbacks, then you take the average of those four properties and say that's the kind of new setback just because it's been developed that way. And I think that code is to, to be like a first kind of check to see if you need a variance or not. Well, in this case, we have a lot, I mean, there's several houses that are kind of, the corner might not meet the setback, or, you know, of course, next door's one, the guest house comes pretty close to the, um, rear property line, and I think there's another place that's down, you know, down on the street that quite doesn't make the setback. Then if you go on the other side of the street, there's a couple more. And so, in a sense, we kind of have a, kind of a, a trend there. And, but if you go even farther out, there's a lot more houses and tightness, and not knowing the history of all those, you know, variances may have been granted, or maybe it wasn't really a thing back then, you know, a lot, maybe some of these houses were built before we adopted our code. So it's really a tough call. I mean, and if, for the purist, you know, you're gonna have to make these findings. So I'm recommending that you can approve this, this variance request if the following findings could be made, and then, uh, they're explained here, it says, "Conditions in the property causing a hardship are not common to or all, to all or most properties in the area." You know, my, my discussion on that finding was to actually examine those questions, those answers to those questions, and if, in this case, there are more, there, there are notable properties that have built structures that do not follow the strict setback line. So it's not like we're looking with a perfectly done block, and then this one person wants a variance. It's kind of a, it's kind of, kind of one of those tight neighborhoods, you know. So I'm saying the property in the area has many odd shaped lots, and the vicinity has several properties with similar approaches. So I'm not sure if that's really evidence, but it's up to you guys to consider the application and my suggestions, and if, and if you can make that finding, I would go ahead and do that. The second one is a hardship exists because the conditions on the property and not, because of the conditions of the property and not by an active owner of the property. Third finding would be, well, my discussion on that is, again, please see those sections and the honest answers from the applicant representative. Their case is more like, um, this is the, this is how this garage has to be because it's a, it's the effective size, and it's the spot. If you've, if you've been to the, to the site, it's basically a slab right now, and there's that guest house right there, and then there's the other one across the street, it's all tight, you know, so, um, it's not really a stretch to want to have what everybody else has, but it's still hard to kind of make those findings unless you can come up with the evidence. So a variance is needed, and this is the third finding, um, variance is needed to provide same property rights enjoyed by other property rights in the area with the same zone. Granting a variance may not give special privileges to a property. So this is my answer there, it's a little more specific. If you look at section 5B, the applicant does state that there are other properties on Rome Street that are within the 10-foot section, and this is not a unique situation in that particular quarter. Staff agrees with that assertion, that it really isn't unique in this neighborhood. So, um, and again, bring in 18.24.130, it supports buildings within setbacks of other properties have similar setbacks. That's essentially the intent of that section of the code. And I'm saying that in this case, Rome Avenue has a few, and, but not strictly to the letter of that specific law. That's why we're here, hearing, since, you know, averaging the setbacks and get the building permit. Since the vicinity has many setback encroachments, it is not uncommon in this particular areas to have those tight setbacks. Last finding is granting a variance will not create a problem for adjacent properties and will not conflict with public interest, design code for the general plan. Again, we just gotta look at the surrounding properties, and that's a large triangular lot, and there's a garage that is set within five-foot property line, three-foot setback, just like they're requesting. The other neighboring lots are not impacted by the structure placement. And the reason I say that is because it's a slab, it's up at the back, and if it's not a garage, it's just gonna be a slab. And it's really not a yard, it's just, it's just a cement slab, you know, really, obviously a public park. So, and the height of it is compliant. A lot of cities have a 15-foot limit, we don't, we have a, I think it's a 17-foot. It's okay, the height of it isn't, you know, usually the height might, you know, mess with the neighborhood's property. So, those are the findings that you're supposed to have on the record for, for granting this variance. So the only thing I would, I would suggest is, I would say that if you can grant, if you can make those findings, you can approve this project. Granted, I don't necessarily know if it's to the letter of the intent of the variance legislation from the city, uh, not the city, the state of California, but, you know, we're in a neighborhood here where it's not uncommon, so it's not like a special privilege, but it's also not really like an undue hardship either. And I think if the applicant's here, we might wanna get a little bit more about maybe the history of that guest house. You know, if they already had a garage, and they converted to a guest house, now they want a garage and they need a variance to do that, I don't really consider that an undue hardship. That's just maybe, maybe honest. It's a, so done, you know, one big way. But, uh, I don't see this as a, as a square hole, a square peg in a round hole. This is kind of common in that neighborhood. I mean, it's all over the place. That, that particular area, there's so small lots and setbacks, or, you know, if it wasn't this street, it's another street that has sometimes a door, it's like a foot or two from the street, you know, or from the property line. So this is a tough one, you know, that, you know, we don't really have everything we need to make the findings, maybe, but you guys make the discussion, can come to conclusions that would support that. So I would say you can approve it, but you really need to discuss the findings and the required first. And also, I would recommend adopting the notice of exemption as well, because it is exempt from the California Department of Quality Act. So, um, basically, I, I usually typically don't do this as much, but I just gave a whole application in here for the, for the record, just because I think Ken went to some pretty good effort on this application. And, um, he's, he's, he's telling it like it is from his perspective, he's the project representative, so, I don't think Ken is here tonight, but, um, maybe the owners are, but, yeah, I think we need to just discuss the hardship part, maybe, and maybe you could override that by saying it's not really that uncommon in this neighborhood. So that's my cautious recommendation, but I think you can approve this. We're not cautious, though, because it's not, none of them are, but this one is close. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Is the applicant here to say a few words?
Yep.
I'm Bill Hofer. I'm the applicant. And I didn't get your name, sir?
Chief McKinnon.
And you're an advisor or something, or?
Yeah, I'm the contractor.
Okay, thanks, Keith. I did see a Cooper driving around there last night. Is that one of you guys? Yeah, thank you for at least visiting the site, I appreciate that. Should've flagged me down and asked questions then, I would've been glad to give you a tour, but, um, the history there, I bought the property in 81, and I had two children. By 95, I had six. So we did convert a single car garage, it was existing there, and it had a woodshed on it. I, I bought a permit, and it's a permitted conversion, now there's a bathroom there and a bedroom. And, uh, so what I'm asking for now is, I want the same privilege as everybody else has, is to secure my vehicles. And as Keith has already said a number of times, it's perfectly consistent with everybody else in the neighborhood. In fact, I, um, I was required to provide 30 first-class stamps and envelopes to get my application, notification out to my neighbors, so I walked around a couple days ago just to check and see, and of the 30 people that were contacted, 10 of them do not meet the requirements that I'm asking for here. And so, uh, it's not unusual situation, I don't think. Uh, I'm still gonna be seven feet off of the city pavement. I am gonna be close to my property line, but Mr. Andrew Ghetto is my next door neighbor, and he said he would come and testify, he's not in opposition to my application, he fully supports it. Guy Wilson also is right up against the property line. Former mayor Bob Hall, his garage is right up on the property line, he's one of my neighbors. So what I'm asking is, uh, one of the extenuating circumstances, there was a city drainage ditch in my yard that terminated, and, um, every winter it would flood my yard, and so I, I couldn't build on top of that. And then, uh, just a year and a half ago, the city was, agreed to fix that. I granted them, typically it would go across my backyard and under my neighbor's garage is how it drained. They wanted to take a shortcut out through my carport, and I said, "Well, I intend to build a garage on there someday, is that gonna be a problem?" And Craig Sharp was there, the foreman Tony was there, a whole bunch of guys, they said, "No, it's not a problem." So I said, "Well, I'm gonna pursue that then," and that's what this is.
Thank you. Are there any opponents of this project present this evening? Not a one. No need for rebuttals then? All right, we're gonna close the hearing right there, and we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves. We'll start with Mr. Parham. Did you have anything to add? Any questions?
No, actually, it was very well presented, uh, both in the paperwork that we received as well as from the property owner. You know, I'm very familiar with that neighborhood myself, and, uh, there are a lot of properties there that have had those exceptions in construction, not just on, on Rome and Stringtown. So, um, this is a pretty common thing for that subdivision too.
I second that. Um, went out there and nosed around, and, um, it obviously was nothing out of the ordinary that would stand out. So I also, you know, agree that there's a story behind it, there's a reason behind it, and, um, I feel like you're entitled to, to, as you say, the other things that other people have.
Mark?
My biggest concern was what was happening right at that property line where, where the building stops, and I was greatly re-insured by seven feet of gravity, you know. If, if by some chance at some point sidewalks still in that neighborhood, there's still room for sidewalks. And, uh, so that was my biggest concern. I see this as being completely consistent with what's happening in the neighborhood and a necessary thing. I think six children is a really good reason to convert your garage.
Better than a man cave.
Yeah. I thought you sounded like my wife.
That's kind of why I wanted to have this. Because it's not perfect, but if you look at the neighborhood, it's kind of normal.
This is what variance is for?
My concern, as Keith said earlier, is that it's a self-imposed hardship. Now, you, none of the setback requirements are meant, not necessarily an issue because you have other setbacks that aren't, that don't meet the requirements, but, um, this is going from two parking spaces to a one parking space. So you have, you're going from two off-street parking spaces to one off-street parking space. And I believe, and I strongly believe that there should be at least two, because it's a tight neighborhood, and you got limited parking around there, it's pretty crammed in there with cars once in a while, so you're eliminating one of these off-street parking And that's pretty much...
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've already addressed that with Paul, the building inspector. He knows my plan, where I'm, I'm actually gonna install, there's a lift that you can get that actually raises up the car, and you can drive the other car under it. They're about $4,000, they're, um, they're sturdy, and they don't tip over, and they don't have to be bolted down, and so, uh, in that space, I can still get two cars safely off the road, away from the snowplows and all that.
Okay. All right, we can entertain motions if we like.
I'll make a motion to approve the requests as well as the Sequo exemption for this application permit.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I second. Aye.
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 Opposed? Just me? Okay. And that one is closed.
Thank you. Um, can I say something about the process, separate from this? Just for future, um, help between the city and the commission and citizens, nowhere on the application does it talk about a fee? And I was already, uh, I hired an engineer, I hired a surveyor, I was 1,800 bucks into this, and then I dropped off the application, and, um, Paul thought, "Well, maybe the city administrator could sign off on this, and it might not have to come to you guys." So I came back in about a week, and he says, "No, it has to go to the commission." Okay. Well, then Sandy told me, "It's 150 bucks, and 30 stamps and 30 envelopes," and, um, I certainly understand, I mean, she's not making that number up, but it would be nice to know those costs ahead of time, and it's not on the application. So, uh, in the future, let the citizens know what this is gonna cost, it'd be a big help.
That is interesting, because we have had a number of, um, variances, or one variance, and it seemed to me like there was a price list attached when we picked up, so, day...
So are there different charges for different kinds of variances?
Yeah, I mean, it was just right there.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
If you're doing this, it's this, if you're doing that, and I remember the 150 dollars, so, ouch.
Well, I mean, it's, 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 uh, something that has to be done, but it'd be kind of cool to know ahead of time.
Yeah, the city, I, I admit that the city probably needs to relook at how it presents its information, but there is a thing, like she's talking about, it's called a fee schedule.
Yeah.
And it has everything on it, variance condition, lease from the parcel map, this and that, the other thing, it's on, it's on the website.
I didn't, I didn't get it on the website, it was somehow handed to us.
So perhaps what, you know, I think we should pay note, uh, the information is kind of lacking.
Well, I know there was transition between staff, there was Sandy coming in and Debbie going out, so just, just I'd let you know.
Well, here, I got another thing.
Uh-oh.
Lately, you know, we've been having these things that would, you would have benefited from, too, we all would have benefited from, is when you apply for something, we, lately we've been bringing in this thing that we call pre-application meeting, to where you talk about your project and you identify some of the issues you might be facing, and at that point in time, that's a good time to discuss fees and other things.
Yeah.
Like, you know, uh, you know, engineering costs.
Feel free to, before you eat them all.
I don't know if it counts on this one, but on some applications, let's say, subdivision. A lot of staff, so the, the fees are supposed to reflect how much resources... A lot of staff, so the fees are supposed to reflect how much resources we get by getting this to this point and getting your approval. And it's supposed to be based on actual cost. And I have to say that hundred fifty is really, pretty light for all this. You know, you have to prepare this for whatever the case. But I do think that, yeah, we need to work on that information presentation. It'll take, that's due to my...
Well, thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up, public hearing for tentative parcel map dividing two parcels described as zero-six-zero dash three-five-one dash three-six-zero and zero-six-zero-three-five-one three-seven-zero into four parcels. The site is the former location of the Great Northern Services at seven-eight-zero South Davis Avenue.
Okay. Couple of months ago, I forgot how long ago, we actually had this hearing once already, and it was for a seven lot tentative map with a looped road, all sorts of things. You know, you could ask Bonnie, but I think that some of the hidden costs of that were overwhelming to tip in. And you guys approved that subdivision, had some conditions on it that were pretty much formulated through staff and city engineering. And so, they're coming back with this new project. Now, the reason we have a ready hearing, well, it's obviously a new project. I don't think we need to get into the details of this new project because the details are really the same as before, except for all the concerns you had on the last one aren't there anymore as far as the width of the looped road and the fact that it's going to go off property and there was some kind of radius, turn radius issues and things that weren't necessarily clear that we added conditions to that map. And that process is different as well. Tentative map gets approved at the tentative stage by both, like the city commission essentially recommends to the council that they should approve the tentative map as well. But they can still make changes to it. Now, a parcel map is a lot less on a review part. Once the conditions are placed on a parcel map, there's not many surprises after that, you know? And it's a little less of a review. I think next time, it just goes to council to make sure that the map that you guys approved is the same as the map that they have. And that's usually signed off by the city engineer. Now, I want to make clear that I have one condition on here that I think I put on there in error. I think it was left over from the last project, and that's condition number four. It says, "Fire hydrant water lines shall be moved for ultimate pressure and have no dead-end lines." Well, I revisited the letter I got from the city engineer and he does not say that. So, that's stricken from the conditions of approval. But he did say that an agent's line would be, is what he's saying rather than a city's. And I think the, for the final map, should have a few little adjustments. I will also give everybody a, there's a red mark copy with like three red marks on the map. It's really not an issue. So, things such as the easement still should have language in it. It's kind of a public easement, so people can build them in, you know, like fire, fire hydrants and so that's an easy one. What the city engineer says about fire hose, he says, "We were able to roughly model the proposed dead-end water line as an eight-inch pipe which provided approximately 2,000 gallons per minute with twenty PSI residual at the new fire hydrant." And he says that's sufficient, so we don't need to worry about the looped line, okay? And he says, "I just find this is sufficient to satisfy the fire marshal and I would get his confirmation. Let me know if you have any other questions." Now, I don't know, I did not ask the fire marshal. I was in meetings where I believe Great Northern was there, their air engineer, and my notes can be indicated in the drawing. So, I still want to strike that from the conditions of approval. If it comes out that I'm wrong, well, that's a technical issue. You don't have to come back to me and try to do anything.
Keith, which number were you referring to?
Number four on the condition.
Okay, I got that, but then I thought you said something after four.
Nope, I just wanted to read what the city engineer said.
Gotcha.
Because it's evidence. I need to present the evidence. You know, we have to connect what the conditions are because that's the evidence that's on the record. And if the city engineer doesn't follow it, I'm not going to, so that's sufficient.
So, the conditions of approval are for this current?
Yeah. And so, things have changed. I might have left that on there or I might have been confused from the meeting.
Okay, so number four has already been taken care of?
Yeah, we're going to strike that.
Okay.
There's really not much difference in the whole presentation here. It's just that we got three less lots. So, really, it's really not, it's kind of a no-go area for me. I think you can approve this project very easily as conditioned and, you know, because the findings are all supported by the, by the, you know, we still have to be consistent with general plan. The last project was, the new project is. The design improvements are consistent with municipal code or the party. Yes, they are, and, you know, when you have the city engineer weighing in, he definitely looks at the city standards. The site is still physically suitable and the density is the same. It's physically suitable for the density. In fact, it's probably less dense at this point in time. Yeah, the design of the subdivision is still for non-public health problems and the design of the subdivision improves for not conflict with easements or anything. So, it's unfortunate that they couldn't do their first project. We all liked that one. Rod liked it, I guess, just those things such as utility costs and stuff, just a little one. You've got to remember it's a nonprofit organization. You've got to go within the needs. It's just a smaller map, it's just a smaller project. And it's still exempt from the California Department. That's my story.
All right, Ms. Bonnie?
Thank you. My name's Bonnie Kubowitz, Executive Director for Great Northern Services at Three Ten Bowls. And yes, we really wanted to do the original project. And, but just looking at getting everything done before we even start building these homes, we were at $337,000. So, we had to step back and be realistic about what we could do. And so, before you is something that we can do. The projection on this now is $118,000. So, this will not only allow us to do this properly, and then we'll be able to build some homes. The, I don't know how far you've even seen, but Cal Poly has been, has designed the homes. We chose the winning design back in December. And it's a really lovely house. It's really quite nice, three-bedroom, two-bath, has a garage. It's, it's going, they're going to be really lovely up there. So, although we're sad we couldn't provide more, this is feasible for us to be able to do. Do you have any questions?
Can we come into your building and see the, the design?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Seriously, is it there? Can we come see it?
Yeah, they, we've made a couple of little changes on it. It's, it's a basic floor plan, two bedrooms where the kids are away from the parents. The parents are, you know, have a master suite with a deck. It's the roof that we actually really liked because all, now, all four of these parcels are going to be facing the mountain. And so, what the roof is, is a slanted high roof. And then, it comes down and all of that is glass. And then, the roof comes back down. So, it's kind of a, I don't, you know, I'm not a construction, so I don't know the terminology, but a modern look, I guess, is what I would say. And it looks really quite nice.
Are these the same designs that you guys had previously, just on, just on bigger lots, right?
We, yeah, we actually didn't choose the, we went down and chose the design at Cal Poly just the beginning of December. And so, what that, and what that class now is doing is taking that one particular, we had eight to choose from, that one particular design, and now they're actually making plans that we can actually move forward and get a permit. So, the, all the infrastructure stuff was like a shock to me. So, here I am again, different plan, same basic idea that we want to do.
Mark, questions? Anything?
No, actually, I don't.
I was going to lay it on this so I wasn't around for the discussion during this, so that time's good.
Thank you.
You had just been to, the week before, I think, to Cal Poly because Rod said, "We just went down and picked, picked the design."
Yeah.
So, this is not any changes other than scale?
Yes, we can't do as many. And actually, for, for the people that are going to have this, you know, it won't be tight. We were going to do, it's, they're going to have a larger piece of property. Except on large, parcel three, where we have the, that is the cul-de-sac for turning around space. And I think we had it on the last one, too. It was like five and six cul-de-sac. So, now, it's just the one particular parcel.
Gotcha.
What is AC paving?
Oh, please don't ask me a question like that.
Okay. Because you got, the cul-de-sac is one type of pavement and you got the rest of it, the existing paved driveway is another, is it just means that it's existing?
It's already paved up there, yes. That whole property is paved on that side, the existing.
Now, there's a portion of the parking lot that is owned by Great Northern and a portion of it is owned by?
The school.
The school?
Yeah.
So, when somebody drives into their, let's say, parcel three or even parcel four?
That's why we have the cul-de-sac there because it would encroach onto, that's where the school buses are, back in that area.
But I think people would be more inclined to drive straight through the school section of the parking lot just to get to their house. And we discussed, last time we approved the other one, the possibility of, and I think the expectation of repaving that existing paved driveway? Is that something that's still going to happen?
That I don't know.
Don't know? Okay. And so, there's not going to be anything to divide that portion into an actual?
No.
City-approved street?
Well, maybe Keith knows more than I do.
I'm looking right at the map here and it says painted double-yellow line.
Okay.
To delineate that.
Okay.
So, I have two questions. One, so with this new redesign here with the four parcels, you're looking at doing, each parcel would be one single-family home?
Yes.
Individually? The other question I have is in regards to the looped water line, although staff says that the engineers have reviewed it, that it may not be necessary. On the map here, there is a waterline easement for a future waterline loop. Will that easement still be in place? Should the fire marshal or the fire chief from the city fire department decide that that is necessary? Will that easement still be in place for the future?
I've got another, another thing on that. The red mark copy from the city engineer does have a red dotted line extending that out, and it says, "May want to consider realigning the proposed easement to accommodate the location of the existing waterline for neighborhood subdivision." So, if that's what, and also it says, "Provide a ten-foot waterline easement for the city for a future loop." Yeah, I would think that's on the map and it's also confirmed. And see, if you see what I'm saying, here we got this red line, so the city engineer's even saying to put that on the map.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's only a few red marks on this map and usually those things are really a lot worse. And so, I think this time, everybody's on the same page.
Having, having it, just the waterline and dead end with the fire hydrant there is going to save us a lot of money.
Right. And, and I'm sure the engineers did their due diligence in checking that. I just like the idea of that easement being there.
Exactly.
Should it be required in the future? I would hate for a person to buy property there, say parcel three or four, and then after they make that purchase realize, you know, we find out that, that...
Right, and that, that easement, I think that waterline is a looped waterline also. So, yeah, I think that they're perfectly covered.
Right. The city engineer, he looks at pressure and, you know, things like that, and it's all done by calculation. So, you know, the proposed six-inch waterline, he just couldn't make it work. So, he says right here on the map, one red mark, it says, "New six-inch waterline fire hydrant in phase one." He goes out of his mid-range. So, he's saying six-inch won't work. So, we already know that the calculations support an eight-inch line.
Right.
I saw some other emails from the old, the previous project that spelled out all the calculations and they still couldn't make it work without an eight-inch line. So, that's what we're struggling with. City engineer, they don't really have much wiggle room because they have licenses and standards they have to comply with. There are, there is a little bit of discretion if they can make it work, you know, mathematically. But they're definitely saying that they want to see that easement on the map, standard for, for the future, and that's what they're asking, so.
And there could be further developments, you know, on another adjacent property where that, that easement would be required access to build a loop waterline for the other property development in the future. So, understanding that it's not necessary for this project, it just, it's comforting to know that easement's there. So that there's protection for the future.
Absolutely.
Keith, who is responsible for maintenance of that existing paved driveway?
That would be the applicants, the owners of the property.
And once the property is sold?
Well, no, it's probably going to be in, you know, like H.O.A. or whatever they do. It's something that they maintain because they're not offering it for dedication.
Okay.
For a city street. And I think if you remember, I think it's in the staff report, too, that the city's not in a position anymore to be taking on public streets to maintain. Now, I would say in a big subdivision or something maybe that's more important, but this is a four-unit deal, essentially certified pretty wide easement. I don't know, last time, one of the discussions was maybe the easement was too small and we want it to be a couple of feet larger. Well, this one's 28 feet, so that's kind of like, you know, more than we would ask. You know, I, you know, it's bigger than the last, like, state road. Now, there was one thing that I don't think I made, there was a fire hydrant that I think the, this might come out in between the two hearings, but this is again, another technical issue. It's not necessarily about the map tonight. But it seems that we wanted to have one of those fire hydrants put in on phase one instead of waiting for phase two. And I just looked at my conditions of approval and it wasn't there.
It's in here for phase one.
Oh, in my conditions?
Fire hydrant, phase one, right, ten-foot wide easement.
She's looking at the map.
Okay. Yeah, but they were kind of saying that there was something for phase two, and I think the fire chief wanted it for phase one. So, that might be one of those things that we, before we get to council, we're not going to figure that out. Now, the next steps really isn't another review per se. It's almost a thing that says the final map is exactly what, what was, you know, approved and discussed at the meeting. But I think there was an issue about when to put a fire hydrant in. I'm sorry, but I think I failed to fit in the conditions of approval.
Actually, number five does state that.
Oh, it does.
Parcel map shall include a new hydrant in the southeast corner of unit one entering the subdivision.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then, it goes on further in a language to describe that a new proposed unit in, you know?
That was from a pre-application meeting with Great Northern, Craig Sharp, Ron Stock, and the fire chief. The engineer wasn't there, but that was a fire chief's condition, so. I just wanted to provide the evidence, you know, to support what the fire... you know, to support the, the conditions of approval.
So, there was a, a rather large chunk of, uh, property that we have, um, given to the city. And we're hoping that you guys get right on that so that we can build. So, if you could get that street kind of cleaned up, and if it comes to you to do it, if you could just approve it, I don't know how it works, but it would be really nice, um, uh, to be able to build that first house with the proper street that you guys wanted and, you know, we gave you. I don't know when that's going to happen.
I can't make any promises.
My guess would be not soon.
[laughing].
But maybe so.
And I'm sorry, did we have any opponents of the project in the audience that would like to speak?
Or proponents?
Or questions?
Questions?
Proponents, opponents?
Concerned voters.
Fellow citizens.
Yeah, Darren Quigley, 300 Woodridge Court, Weed. So, just live, um, just a little bit west of this new proposed subdivision. And, you know, I, I like the new design. It looks a lot better than, than the old design with that road returning on the, on the curve. So, I support that. My only main issue, well, two main issues, would be down there where it says, "Unit two, parcels three and four shall be limited to triplexes." So, those aren't going to be single-family residential?
No, that, that, that was, um, it's zoned R4.
Okay.
And so, that, that kind of means that they can grow all the way to fourplexes or multifamily. Um, the sites aren't necessarily suitable for that. So, in that meeting, Ron Stock, uh, planning director slash city administrator, or city manager, was very adamant about not having that be more than, you know, single-family. Because the way he said it was proposed as single-family, um, and that's what he thought it was going to be. But, there's an argument to say, "Well, it's zoned a certain way. You know, we have our rights and this and that." So, no more than a duplex. Does it say duplex?
Yeah, it says shall be tri- I'd like to see if you can change that to no more than a duplex. But also, you know, maybe in a future housing element, you know, we're okay. Like, where, where we live, it's zoned R3, too, and we certainly don't want apartments up there. We keep, we keep bringing that up. We're good with that being changed to R1, you know, so.
Here's the connection to the code. Um, even though it's maybe zoned for something higher, it's usually what the surround, like, if the area has been developed as single-family, that's kind of the rule. It's a, "Well, well, you know, now it's got to be single-family." And that's what the reasoning that, um, the planning director was using in that meeting. And I, and I think I might have done this twice, but it does say residential, condition number eight says residential development shall not exceed two units per parcel. And I know that the intent is to do the single-family.
Yes.
Good, that's good.
It's, it's zoned that way, but that's not our intent.
Let's just think, a proponent that's not here tonight would rather have the right to build bigger if he could based on the zoning. And Ron brought up that law that says it's really kind of like whatever's already there. Like, let's say the example would be Woodbridge, you know, that subdivision of Woodbridge. Well, that's, that's zoned multifamily, too. But it's developed as single-family. So, if there happened to be an empty lot on there, it wouldn't really be the right of the owner to build it to the R4 standards. And that's what the conditions here try to do. If you look at condition eight, it says residential development shall not exceed two units per parcel. So, like, you know, when you look at parcel four, that's a pretty big parcel. And I think that the proponent was kind of thinking in terms of being able to develop it if needed, you know, or keeping the option open, which is a reasonable request, but based on that, that policy that Ron cited, it's single, it's majority of single-family. It's a special little area. It's kind of a R4 that includes offices and, you know, businesses. So, even though it says that, the surroundings are developed as single-family, as you stated. And so, I think that's where, that's where condition eight comes from.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that'd be my primary concern. You know, we had the, the duplex up there. It wasn't replaced out the fire, but it was never well-kept. And we had the Clement apartments up there, same thing, not well-kept at all. The rest, if you come around South Davis, all the way down to Shasta, Shasta Avenue, Woodridge, and all the house, single-family residents have always been well-kept, but the apartments have been a, the two we had up there have not settled, set a very good history for us, let's put it that way. Thanks.
Yeah, I think the, I think that's the intent.
Let me, let me answer that for you.
Sure.
The, the whole intent of us doing this is for sale, not for rent, number one. We're not doing rentals. The original intent was in hopes of being able to do some duplexes because that would reduce the cost of owning part of a duplex. And what we are building these for are for families to be able to afford to buy a home. These are people who are making, if not minimum wage, close to minimum wage with two families working. And, uh, what we want to do is to have more home ownership where assets could elevate them higher. So, all, with this new plan that we're looking at, we are not, we, we decided to step back because of costs also in building and just do single-family homes with the same intent of trying to get more homes for, uh, working-class families in Weed. I hope that answers your question.
It was single-family. This apartment, we've had bad experiences with.
At the same time, you couldn't, you know, if somebody decides to buy one of those houses and rent it out, I mean, that's up to them.
Absolutely.
So, it, there's nothing in place to stop them from becoming, becoming rentals.
The, the houses are going to be sold at market rate. So, if you're thinking that we're selling these below rate?
No.
And then somebody else coming in and buying them and making a slum, that is never our intent.
Well, no, my point, my point is, is you can't, you can't just say, "We don't want these to be rentals" because it's.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say that.
No, I know, but it starts, it starts to get into sort of a class.
I said, "We're not building apartment buildings and we're not looking at rentals, at us providing rentals."
No, I understand. I understand.
No.
Only once someone buys it.
It's theirs.
But, but just, just to say that we don't want apartments in a certain neighborhood or a certain area is, I understand. It's just, um...
That's not what I'm saying.
I know. I know.
Okay.
Bonnie, what, what's the size of the houses?
Oh, um, they're 13-something square feet.
Oh, okay. And that's good. Perfect.
Yeah.
And then, three-bedroom, two-bath?
Three-bedroom, two-bath.
Good. Okay.
Laundry room, garage, nice.
Yeah. Just, just, you know, they, you're in R4, though, they can still make that bigger, right? That phase four, they can put a duplex?
No, that's what the condition said, no. Because.
That's going to stay, right?
Yeah. Well, the thing is, it really depends on how, if this was completely out in the middle of nowhere and there was no surrounding areas, yeah, the zoning would apply. But there's that policy in our municipal code that says that this is what's been cited a lot by the planning director slash, um, and so, so he said that whatever's developed around it, however, whatever style that is there already surrounding it is what's going to happen. In this case, um, it's a lot of single-family, so there's not really too much, based on that policy, that's why we're able to say you can't have, you know, it can't go with that. But also, there's a lot of specifications that come along with that. You know, like, when you want to build a fourplex or more, or multifamily or whatever, you need a certain amount of space per unit, you know, that's not necessarily parcel size. Um, and then, the, the width of driveways changes and the whole way that things, the fire hydrants are going and the water lines. Right now, this is all set up for nothing more than duplexes. And that is specifically probably for parcel three and four, because the first phase is parcel one and two. And that's going to be built with the model homes that they're getting, that they're working with Cal Poly for designs. And these, these house, these homes are, they're single-family. So, so the only, the only reason the question came up is just because the same way you thought. Hey, well, does that give us the right to later on sell this or, you know, uh, yeah, or sell parcel four with the intent that somebody can come in and, well, the thing is, someone, they would think that they can come in just because it's R4 and put an apartment back there.
Is it R4?
Yeah, it's, it's R4, it's locked. But, but the whole project is based on not R4. Like, the more units on the property, the bigger the lines, water lines need to be and all that. So, this is kind of, but we have to put that, that in there because the reason is, Great Northern understands what we want. But what if they sell a lot three and four? Well, the new owners are going to come in thinking that, hey, it's R4. So, we have to put that in there for subsequent owners, you know what I mean? And so, we all agree in this room, but 10 years from now, unless this is in the file with that restriction on it, it'd be, you know, we'd have to go through this all over again and argue, you know, have debates with new property owners and real estate people. So, yeah, the, the, R4 is what the zone is, but based on the fact that it's single-family all around, R4 is probably just being kind of extinguished. Those rights have been kind of, get, you know, extinguished because of that policy. I just wanted to add that. Good question. That's a good question.
Does anybody else have anything? Bonnie, I just wanted to say, I love this project. It's one of my favorite projects.
Thank you.
I do have one huge thing for me is, is what I mentioned before, is that roadway being not maintained or not brand-new when we finish this project. So, to me, the application comes off as just incomplete. The project comes off as incomplete because just to slap a double-yellow line there, I, I doubt anybody's going to actually use it. They're just going to go through the parking lot into their, into their driveway. So, to me, it's just an incomplete plan. Um, that's the only reason I would oppose it. But I'm sure, you know, I couldn't guess, uh, what they would do, but they might approve. But to me, that's the only thing standing in its way, is a, a nice new driveway to go through instead of just existing pavement. And that's all I got. Do we entertain motions now?
Yes, we do. I move that we recommend the city council adopts the sequer notice of exemption and we approve the Great Northern Services parcel map.
I second that motion.
As modified, because remember I said?
As modified with the current seven, currently, there's seven.
Eight inches long.
We got rid of one of them.
With removal of number four.
Remove, removing number four.
Being moved, don't walk on being moved.
Yes.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just me again?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. We can't wait.
All right. Item six, approval of the minutes. Everybody go through them?
Yep.
I just have one change for the minutes and the agenda is just on the spelling. Darrell has two Ls. Other than that.
Come on. Do we need to move to approve the minutes?
Nope.
No.
No, okay. Any commissioner reports this evening?
I'm looking forward to the, uh, meeting with the board to, you know, at the Spirit Board at 4:00.
The big, the big board.
Yeah, the big.
The weed dying, still at it.
The state board.
So, that's, uh, I'll listen to it. That goes if you're not there.
Very good.
And this is in regards to the Roseburg.
Mm-hmm. The state board's coming in and they're going to let them.
Mark, do you have anything? Need staff report?
Going to let her.
Excellent. Did you guys have anything?
Hmm, can't think of it.
Okay. Staff reports. What do we got?
I have nothing, Schneider.
Not a thing.
I haven't been here in a couple months, but.
Welcome back. We missed you.
Yeah. These are kind of progress. I just, Ron, this is also a question.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, whoa, whoa. Sorry.
I do have one request. Um, June 20th?
Oh, yes.
Is our planning commission meeting. I will be out of the area of training. So, I'm wondering if we can adjourn our planning commission if there are action items to possibly June 25th, 26th, or 27th. I will be gone that entire week.
Both, all of those dates are good for me, Sandy.
Me, too.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm open as well.
So, just, just let you guys know. Okay.
Pick one.
Let us know.
Well, if, if I get it early enough, I just.
Do you have to give proper notice in the paper or anything like that? Nothing? Okay.
Yeah, just let us know when we're due.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? I'm not going to oppose this one.
You're not going to.
[laughing].